And join us in the pledge of allegiance and we'll start our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting. This is the Union Township Board of Trustees' regular meeting for June tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Let the record show that all three trustees are present, and also present is our fiscal officer, Mr. Ron Campbell. Gentlemen, the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. This will be from the May thirteenth regular meeting. Is there any objections or any changes to the minutes? If there's none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. McGee.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue.
Yes.
Mr. McGraw.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is correspondence. Mr. Campbell, did you have anything to report tonight?
I do. I have two things. They're both liquor permits. The first one is for, it's a new permit for Bob Evans Restaurants LLC, doing business as Bob Evans Restaurant, number one sixty-two, forty-four seventy-one, Eastgate Boulevard, Union Township, Cincinnati, four-five-two-four-five. Mr. Wright has sent over the accompanying zoning. Everything's okay, and the police department has no objections. If I stand corrected, I only have the one.
Just the one?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. We'll move on to, tonight we have a special presentation. Just to introduce this real quick, some questions that come up from the community about our nine-one-one communications. And I kind of felt that it's one of the probably least understood departments that we have, and but it's also one of the most important as far as saving lives and important to the community. So I asked Mr. Geis to put together a presentation to explain more about our nine-one-one communications and also our whole communications department, everything they do. So with that, Mr. Geis, I'll turn things over to you so you can do your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw and trustees. I always appreciate the opportunity to stand before you. It's nice to be on this side of the Diaz. So communications in Union Township. Probably some of you know and maybe you don't know. You know, I started out as a dispatcher in the seventies. You know, when I started out as a dispatcher in the seventies, communications operators was really more of a gateway to being a police officer than it was for a career. And people that entered into that role typically went on to be, you know, police officers, some firefighters, EMTs, but that was the way at eighteen years old, you could get into law enforcement. And so I started in that. So, you know, communications has been a part of my life for a long time. When I came to Union Township in nineteen eighty-five, I was a lieutenant. And the majority of my career while I was here from nineteen eighty-five in the, on the police department through nineteen ninety-four, I was in charge of communications. I was administrative lieutenant here, so I had the opportunity to serve and direct with the employees that we had in our communications department. And, you know, that's where, you know, I really gained an incredible amount of respect for our organization and what we do. The communications department in Union Township started in nineteen eighty-three. Again, a couple of years, really about a year and a half before I started in Union Township. And the reason for that is that we were dispatched by Claremont County at that time, Union Township. And it was really the sheriff's office that did that. And their operation was less than really a professional organization in at that particular time. They had deputies dispatching sometimes, they had civilians dispatching sometimes, without a lot of formal training in that. And Union Township, from what I understand, nineteen eighty-three made the decision that that was not type, the type of organization that we wanted to continue on with. Union Township, you know, had their own police department, you know, they had private fire departments at that particular time, and we're going to a more professional operation in that. And so we started our own communications department. We started out with one dispatcher working on a shift, and it became the, really the lifeline for our safety services in, in Union Township. You've heard me say it before. I'll say it again, you know, tonight at least once. You know, we have the best employees anywhere. And our communications employees are some of the best in the business. I would put them against any standard that I've ever seen in, in operations, and I've had the opportunity to be associated and view a lot of communications departments. And the, under the leadership now with Chief Kaviglia and Officer Gramble and Lieutenant Blanketship, in that they do an incredible job in Union Township. And really what has occurred with our community is very different than when I started in the seventies. Communications operators is now a career position. People go into that with the expectation that that's going to be their livelihood for the entire time. And they continue on for, you know, twenty, thirty, some forty years as communications operators. So in talking about our communications, I really want to go into really safety service and uniquely Union Township and talk about that. All of our operators here are accountable to the board of trustees. That's an important issue with Union Township, I think. Because if there's a problem in our Union Township communications, they don't go to a board of directors. They don't go to some other elected officials. They come to the board of trustees. They're accountable to you in that. And if there's a change that needs to be made, you make it. You authorize, you know, either me, the police department, the communications division, to make those changes. Any problems in that, it's you on that. And that's important because we don't have to go to the, you know, a board of directors that we may or may not have any control over in that. We dispatch all of our calls live. That's not, you know, the standard for a lot of departments across the country now. They're going to a more automated dispatching system. We're also the primary backup system for Claremont County Communications, and we could be a secondary backup for Hammond County Communications, or the Loveland Northeast Communications as well. And all of our communications operators in Union Township, they know the police officers, they know the fire officers, they know our public works people, they know all of our employees. That's important because they, I believe that in Union Township, we all have a sense of responsibility to each other in that. And that's not the same for all organizations. If we were part of, you know, a conglomerate of that, we wouldn't have that same familiar attitude that we have today. And that's critical when you're talking about the lifeline for the police officers and the firefighters in that. Last thing I have on this slide here is that we encourage residents to call us. We don't have a, a cost per call. We don't have a cost for people calling into our communication center. We're not billed that way. We encourage people to call for anything. We want them to call us because we don't want prob, small problems to become big problems. All of our people have continuous training. We have the ability to adapt to special situations. With our police department, they, in fire departments, we have special events coordination. We do VIP planning. We've had presidents here. We have governors here on a regular basis. We have state representatives. We've had Speaker of the House here in Union Township. We've had all of those things, and with our communication center here in Union Township, we're be, we're able to coordinate that with all of our safety services personnel, which is very important. We can do simple things like parades and school functions as well. As our service delivery, when you talk about the state of the art of communications, we have the rapid SOS software. And, you know, I put up there that that really is the Kyle Plus software, where you're able to triangulate the calls for service. So our communications department, if they had a nine-one-one call that came in on a cellphone, they can immediately triangulate that call and send the officers to it, even if an officer, even if the person on the other end of the phone can't tell, tell us where they are or what the problem is. We've had that for some time, and we continue to upgrade that. We use the Call Work software, and that's important because that coordinates all of our data that the dispatchers enter into that, and that immediately goes into other fields for the police officers, and it conforms to the national standards that we have for accreditation and the other reporting, the uniform traffic control reporting systems and the other state reporting systems. A key differentiation between our, our communications and a lot of other communications is that we cross-train our employees with records management. They're not just dispatchers. We couldn't afford to just have dispatchers here. We cross-train them in the records management. And that includes offense reports, accident reports, and every other incident report that comes into Union Township. We have upgraded hardware, and we have new call stations in our dispatch center. Uniquely, Union Township, our communications operators, they attend roll call. Why is that important? Because during the roll call, the sergeants or the officers on duty provide the dispatchers and the, the police officers, the topical information that is occurring at that particular time and other times in the township. If there's a primary focus area, the dispatchers know that. They hear that firsthand from the sergeant, and they hear the responses from the police officers there. We're, it's live. They're not getting it over the phone. We're not teletyping it in to them on a secondary location. They're there in, in real time with it. They understand all the current events that are occurring as well. The residents and the customers, they know who answers the phone. They know when they call Union Township. It's Union Township that's answering the phone. These are our employees, and they're going to get that, that quality service that we have throughout all of our employees. With the communications operators, you know, knowing the employees, they can direct the people that, that call us to a specific person. They can tell them that it's going to be, you know, come into the police station and see, you know, Sergeant Williams, or Sergeant White, or Officer Smith in, in that. You can go to forty-three twelve Glensey-Whitamville Road and pick up an offense report. You can go to Station Forty-nine and see a fire officer at that particular thing. That's important. The other thing that is critical too is the, the people that come in and they talk about the public works complaints and that, you know, if we have potholes, if we have a debris in the roadway, if we have snow and ice complaints, that comes into our dispatch center. So our dispatchers know all of those conditions. They can relay that information to the police officers and the firefighters out there, as well as providing the assistance to the customers that, that make that call. We have thirteen full-time communication specialists, and again, you know, they're all cross-trained in our records management functions. We have four-time Kalia credit communication center with excellence, and we mandate monthly training. Our officers and communications operators are in continual training. We're providing the up-to-date, state-of-the-art training on not only the communication systems, but on our service delivery. And again, you know, we're proud to say that, you know, we have very limited turnover, and, you know, from the reports, you know, we've had limited turnover since two thousand and fifteen. As I said, Officer Gramble does a great job in communications. You know, he's a Kalia assessor, and he's been an assessor since two thousand and fourteen. He goes all across the country evaluating other police departments as well as communication centers on their viability and their performance. And how does that benefit us? Because he can take all of the best standards and the best benchmarking criteria from around the country and bring it back to us, and he can implement that. And he's been an incredible asset to our community. All of the communications operators are APCO certified, and Officer Gramble is a certified instructor in that, again, providing that hands-on and that personal touch to our employees. Again, critically important, important. And again, you know, I've said it before, our dispatchers are intimately connected and knowledgeable with the community as well as our employees. General staffing levels, we have no less than two on at all times. A lot of times we have three because of our call volumes. On average, over the last ten years, we've dispatched more than fifty-five thousand calls a year. Two thousand and twenty, everybody saw a reduction in that, so we were just under forty thousand calls for service. And as I said, we continue to have a manual, a, a minimum of thirty hours of training for our employees at the communications operators. Just a little comparison to Claremont County and, you know, the, the differences in the two communication systems in that. Claremont County, they migrated to a new dispatch system in two thousand and eighteen. They were on an older system, and, you know, we have a system that's compatible with theirs, which actually helps us in the, the fact that they can provide backup for us and we can provide backup for them. They've upgraded some towers in two thousand and nineteen and twenty, and I believe that they're going to continue to upgrade some towers in two thousand and twenty-one. Two thousand and nineteen, Claremont County dispatched about fifty-eight thousand non-sheriff-related calls. And two thousand and twenty, again, they went down with the COVID statistics, a little less than fifty thousand calls for service. Claremont County, they're not Kalia certified. Again, you know, I, I've talked about that several times. I think that that's very important because we could say that we have a good communications division. We could say we have a good fire department or a good police department, but how do you really know? We have outside evaluators come in here on a, a periodic basis, and they look at our system. They, they review, and they're on, online and real time on all of our systems in here. And we have, we have continually received accreditation with excellent standards on all of them. One of the things that I think is really important to, to note is that, you know, the county went to the Lucution, or Lucution, I think is how you pronounce it, dispatch system. And what that is, is that's an automated system. Now, the positive aspects with the automated system in that is as soon as the communications operator takes the, the call for service and, and they get that information, they can type that into a computer, and then the computer automate, automatically dispatches that operation to the respective unit, and particularly in the fire service for that. That can aid in, in expediting that call because they can immediately get that information out. They can get the, the dispatching out to particularly the fire units on a quicker basis when, you know, every minute, particularly if you're in a medical emergency, is critical in that, as well as a fire incident command. The problem with that is that it's garbage in, it can be garbage in and garbage out in that. You know, in, in the last year, we've had, in Claremont County, we've had five plane crash dispatches when we've had none true. We've had some issues where we've had some stabbing calls that, you know, were put in incorrectly. Why is that a problem? When we have a plane crash, we have a critical incident on that, that empties out not only, you know, the fire stations that are primary for that, it empties out the secondary stations for that. One of the things, when, you know, I talked to Chief Daimling and Chief Kaviglia, and specifically Chief Daimling about the having that primary dispatch and having a live dispatch in that. He said one of the most critical things that, you know, he'll call our dispatchers and he'll say is, what did the caller exactly say? Because they could put into the computer that there's a fire at, you know, twenty-twenty Smith Road on that. Well, that doesn't give the fire department enough information. It could be smoke in the building. It could be that the flames are coming out the eaves of that. It could be people trapped into that. So we don't do that. We have that live dispatcher that's continually giving that update to the fire officers and the police officers a hundred percent of the time. Talk about the cost, and really, you know, to me, the, the costs are secondary to this. Because to me, the safety of our employees, the safety of our customers in Union Township is the most critical thing that we should be concerned about in Union Township. However, you, you always have to look at the cost in that, and you have to evaluate where we are in the spending with, you know, our communications department as compared to somewhere else. In talking to John Kuskaden this year in preparation for this, I said, you know, John, in two thousand and, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two, what would the cost be for Union Township to migrate to Claremont County in that? He said, well, the additional cost for the county would be about seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars for that. So I said, okay, that's great, and they would need at least nine additional employees to dispatch for Union Township at our current volume. When I talked to, you know, Claremont County in two thousand and eighteen, and, and, you know, I've talked to them really just about, you know, with every county administrator, going back from Steve Wharton to Dave Spinney to Steve Rabel to Tom Igle, about communications and, you know, the cost for service in that. And, you know, I've talked to them about what would it cost for us to combine our services and for you to dispatch for us, but really, what I would like to do is have the opportunity for them to, you know, come to Union Township, and we would provide, you know, take a look at the opportunity for us to dispatch for all of Claremont County. I think that would really be an opportunity. Unfortunately, we've never been able to get to that. Two thousand and eighteen, they told us that, you know, the cost would be at least six-hundred thousand dollars. Two thousand and twenty-two, as I said, you know, seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight would be the, you know, the full fee for that operation if they did use a call-for-service basis on that. The other thing is, you know, I, you know, I talked about, you know, the control issue of that, you know, Claremont County Communications is controlled by the Claremont County Commissioners. They're Claremont County employees for that, different than the board of trustees. Again, you have direct control over the, the operations there. So when you look at the cost for Union Township and, you know, our, our operation, you can see the bottom line is about one-point-four million dollars a year in that. The majority of that is personnel cost for that. You know, and again, our communications operators, they have a dual role. They do records management as well as communications in that. If we were to migrate to Claremont County, what I did is I took the, the current Claremont County formula, and I just took a reduced amount of calls, about fifty-one thousand five hundred calls, and I put it into their formula with Claremont County on how they calculate their, their calls for service. And I excluded, they have a small component for airtime cost with them. Their airtime cost ranged from about thirty-five thousand to maybe forty-five thousand dollars a year, so I just excluded that in it. If you just put the calls into that, the minimum cost to Union Township would be about six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars if we went to them. My previous conversations with Claremont County is that the only way that they would even consider Union Township going to them is if we paid for all of the additional cost for us to come there because they, they said they have a baseline operation with them, and they would not merge those calls into us. Again, whether or not that would come into fruition or not, I don't know. So our cost would be somewhere between six-hundred-and-fifty thousand to seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars just for the dispatching. Even if we went to them and dispatched, we still would have to have employees in our records management system. Because our records management system Because our records management system, you know, we're going to continue to have to have people answer the phones here. Because we have non-emergency calls that come into Union Township and I just assumed that we would have, you know, an operation from about 6:00 AM to maybe 10:00 PM. And we could have 24-hour operation, which would require more employees. The communications people or the records management people would have to manage the body cam information that's coming online, process the auto accident and the offense reports, the court documents, the Kalia records, and the court notices for the officers and the supervisors in that. I thought the number was probably five. The police chief told me that it would be at least seven. So we kind of settled on six people for that operation. And, you know, it could be as few as five, but it could be as many as seven. And our operations for that would be about $651,000. So when you come down to it, the total cost, if we went to Clermont County, would be the same. It would be, you know, maybe a little bit less or a little bit more on an annual basis. So we wouldn't even save any money, which again, I think is probably the worst way to look at this, is on a financial basis because I believe our operation is best for our community, best for our people, and best for our customers in that. One of the things that we do a little bit differently than Clermont County is that, you know, we don't use MDTs in that. We use tablets. We use just regular tablets that we can buy at Best Buy or we can buy somewhere else. The cost for those is, you know, somewhere between 700 and 900 dollars for each of those units. And then there's an installation cost in our vehicles, which is 400 or 500 dollars from what the police and the fire department told me. If we went to Clermont County, we would have to use their MDTs. And in talking to John Kuskaden, they're about $5,000 apiece, which would be an additional capital cost for us to go to about $360,000 forward. You know, if we would even consider, which, you know, again, I'm not advocating now and I don't believe I would advocate under the current conditions, is that this could have, you know, a dramatic effect on our accreditation standards for our police and our fire departments. Obviously, if we didn't have communications, that would be out the window because we wouldn't have an operation for them to accredit. It could have a difference in our ISO ratings, which are our insurance ratings for our fire department. Again, Clermont County is not accredited. The cost to upgrade to our MDTs would be an ongoing cost. We assume that that's about a five-year life on those. So again, that would be a continuing cost that's greater than our operation. When I talked about the dispatching, that dispatching with Clermont County is exclusively through the computer system, it's not a live dispatch. Again, I think that's a safety issue for our employees and our customers. We also would lose our 911 funding. We receive an amount of funding each year that's tacked on to the cell phones and your hard lines for that. And it amounts to, on one slide, it's about $129,000 a year. If we would migrate away from our dispatch system, we would lose that. And even if we did, we're still going to pay for our records management system in Union Township and the fact that we have both of our, or we have our employees do dual roles in that, we save money here. So really, you know, again, I just wanted to, you know, introduce this, talk about this, and just tell you that, you know, I couldn't be more proud of our employees. They do a great job. Our communications people are some of the best in that. They don't leave. They come here for a career and they stay here. We train them well, we provide a good working environment for that. And I can tell you, working in the business, we want the best possible people that we can have in our community. Our police officers, our firefighters, our public works people, and certainly our residents deserve that in Union Township. And I'm not willing to recommend to you that we would go anywhere else for that. We're internationally accredited and we focus on safety and service. And, you know, that's the critical thing, and that's what I really want to leave you with, is that, you know, our communication system, that we focus on safety, service, and excellence. So with that, I'll take any questions from the board.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate all the information. Trustees, do you have any questions or comments from Mr. Geis?
Not this time, no. A question I do get frequently, what's the Kalia cost? If we can identify the cost for the actual accreditation?
The full Kalia cost in that?
Probably.
It's probably, you know, you know, less than $10,000, less than $10,000 a year.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought it was around $10,000.
At one time it was around $5,000. I remember looking at the figures and it might be $7,000 or something more.
Does by maintaining the Kalia accreditation provide Officer Graham the ability to be the Kalia assessor? Or if the township did not pursue a Kalia accreditation, would Officer Graham still be able to retain being a Kalia assessor all over the country, learning and doing those best practices and assessing other departments?
I could defer to Officer Graham, but, you know, typically, they use assessors that are part of the program and they provide that training within that.
That accurate? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Geis, I did want to ask you about the SOS software. My understanding was we, when the Kyle Plus situation happened, that we already had that software in place, is that correct?
Yes.
So it's probably, at least in Union Township, we would have had a better opportunity to pinpoint where that call was coming from.
We would have the ability to triangulate to the extent that we can now, correct?
It's my understanding that Rapid SOS software too is, for the public's knowledge, unless someone can speak to a different fact on this, for any cellphone that's post 2018. So if you have order, because it became essentially part of public law, that cellphones would automatically unlock to be able to hit all the towers, to be able to provide the triangulation. And that's a post 2018 requirement. Correct, Officer Graham? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Look. And then, you may not have the exact number, but, I mean, we get a lot of calls that are non-emergency, correct? I mean, that's a big portion of calls, right?
Yes.
Okay. And those calls could be non-police related, it could be where's Veterans Park, correct? I mean, it could be anything, right?
You know, and again, they're cyclical. I can tell you that one of the busiest times of the year is Halloween, is, you know, when it's trick-or-treating, you know, what are the regulations? When can people go out? All of those things, and the dispatch, you know, centers are inundated with calls during that time. So yes, we get a lot of calls for that. And the fact that, you know, those calls come into, you know, the dispatch is a non-emergency call, someone may call and really not appreciate the fact that it is an emergency or there is, you know, an issue on that. And with the trained dispatchers that we have, they're able to drill down to that and then provide that information to our safety services personnel.
And then if a person called and said, I'm at the cemetery, I'm supposed to have a funeral today, but I can't find anybody, they could, I mean, our staff has ability, can't we transfer calls to like another department if that happens?
Well, we can transfer calls anywhere within our network into that. And again, we would have direct access to all of our cemetery personnel or any of our public works people.
Okay. And one last thing I wanted to ask, because I didn't know this was the situation, but on the automated calls that the system sends out an automatic call to the county, this is on the county level, I had the opportunity to sit in a couple of times with our communications department to see what they did. And there was a lot of calls where the officer would call back or the fire department would call back and say, we're not locating this address or this place where this emergency is. Can you have the person come outside and find the fire truck or the police car? And the communications officer would stay on the phone the whole time and direct the person, hey, they're out, they say they're outside your house. Can you see them? Can you go out and meet them? Oh yeah, I see them. And I heard that a lot. So I'm just thinking, for a fire department, it might be some automated calls where you lose that interaction. Is that possible?
It's absolutely possible. And, you know, and I can give you another real-life story, and again, I don't want to stand up here and tell war stories or whatever, but I can tell you, within the last year, I had the opportunity one Saturday afternoon to go over to dispatch. I walked into the dispatch center and I could see that, you know, there was, it was sort of a tense situation. And I saw one of our police sergeants, you know, in dispatch, which is not common for that. And what I quickly realized is that Union Township was involved in a multi-jurisdictional pursuit on 275 with a person that was headed toward Kentucky and entered into Kentucky, came back to Ohio several times, transferred over, you know, both the north and the southbound lanes. And what was unique about that is, you know, we have a specific pursuit policy and we follow it religiously on our department. And so what our sergeant did is he went to dispatch and rather than going to the scene and actually contaminating that or providing more chaos with more police officers on the scene, he went to dispatch and he had dispatch call up all of the cameras along 275. And he could not only direct the activities of our police officer, but he could see the activities of all the other law enforcement agencies on there that weren't readily communicating with us or had the ability to communicate with us and to guide our police officer in that. So all of our dispatchers, they had all the cameras from ODOT on there and they had a direct feed to that. And the sergeant in real-time was able to identify what was going on, stage our officer in an appropriate fashion with that, with the assistance with the other officers, because he could evaluate the entire scene as if he were there from Union Township, which was an incredible benefit. And I thought, you know, number one, that was just great thinking on the part of the Union Township Police Sergeant to come into dispatch so he could get a visual representation and know exactly what was going on there, so he could direct our personnel in the safest, most efficient manner. So I mean, it was just, you know, even, you know, I was in the business, I thought that was really amazing and he really did a great job.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, just a couple of quick comments. It's my understanding, the, so with the way the county operates and runs it, they've got, they utilize the APCO retains a accreditation manual, but they do not pay for the actual accreditation and have a third party come in. So I thought that was interesting. And then the way that you got to the number by utilizing their formulas, it's my understanding also that the way that they bill, they bill 80% of the cost to the sheriff, 20% to essentially the other 24 users in the county. And so the volume and size of Union Township to come in, we would not be able to utilize that flat rate charge. So I would actually anticipate that, you know, cost would be higher than what you even got to there at that 738,000 for the cost. So I think that's just a point, I know you had to have a benchmark or a frame for reference here. And then also, our CAD systems are not interoperable, is that correct?
That's not true. They're not the exact same system, but we certainly can dispatch with, we can dispatch to their system. They have a difficult time, I believe, dispatching with our system in that.
Okay.
And even if, you know, even if Union Township decided to scuttle their communication system, Clermont County is going to be required to have another fixed site in that. And all the communications that we had, even if, and say, we decided to operate a countywide communication system from Union Township, which we could do in that, and we could build other agencies, we could build Clermont County for that as well, we'd be required to have a fixed site because the 911 communication PSAP systems actually come in on a trunk line into that. And so if there was a critical incident that occurred here and knocked this out, we would need to have a physical plant for that as a secondary backup.
How significant would that be to evaluate the business case analysis, to actually make a pitch to those other 24 agencies and provide dispatching services for? And actually generate, like, you're stating the call for service fee on that, be competitive with the county on it?
I mean, I've never been directed by the Board of Trustees to engage in that, that proposal for that. And again, if we were going to do that, then we would be just really kind of competing for services within that. If the board would direct me to do that, if your question is, could it be done? Yeah, I'm sure it could be done in that.
I'm asking if there's ever been any history of that, to look at that as a business case analysis and if there was, you know, you went down a path and no, that did not happen, that didn't execute for X reason. So it just sounds as if it's never really been looked at.
I've never done that.
Okay. Okay. And that's not necessarily saying that's a, you know, something to go do, just a question for history there. It's my understanding also for mutual data terminals, for fire and EMS, maybe it's on mutual aid calls, is my understanding for when you're dispatching or going outside for mutual aid calls, that if you're not having that mobile data terminal, is it more difficult to sometimes reach that location and that scene to assess and be able to assist? And I guess my additional question on that is, what other mutual aid services that come in, how often do we see that they know exactly where to go in Union Township, that they have, you know, are they utilizing mobile data terminals or do they just know the area well enough? Because, you know, I recognize and understand our, you know, our quality and our services here, we know the 132 miles of road in Union Township and we know where to go. And that's that familiarity that you speak of, which is, you know, very keen. But when you're in those different situations, what type of impact do you ever see out of the mobile data terminals, either for others providing mutual aid here or for us dispatching in the blind out to other locations?
Again, I would defer to Officer Graham on that, but I believe that we have the ability to send information through the GPS coordinate system to, you know, our personnel if they're needed to go outside of that. And I believe Clermont County has that ability inside to do that as well.
Okay. Okay, and last comment, as this is captured, this is captured in this report as far as the personnel cost, has there been historically any discussion or business case analysis to look also at, you know, they're pursuing, they're doing records management, you're saying, yes, that's their safety services, court orders, accident offense reports that are occurring there. But before encouraging the community to just pick up and call the dispatch center, the question I think that presents itself is, you know, the Mount Mariah Cemetery type of question or scheduling for, you know, anything that may be a services department question. Are we accurately capturing the communication center costs with those personnel costs and not being an intergovernmental charge or at least identified this is a call for service for the service department? And kind of bucketizing what the actual expense is more at a granular level there? Has that been done?
We've never segregated the calls for service and allocated a specific cost for that. We just historically had the, you know, calls for service are for Union Township. And the Union Township calls for service come into the Union Township Communication Center and we use the safety services levy to pay for those calls for service.
Okay. Okay, so the safety services levy is paying and, yeah, okay, I'm tracking with you as far as that goes. Historically, that's never been segregated out and there's potentially, we're encouraging calls for anything to come into the call center, so that helps. Mr. Taylor, do you have anything? I saw you looking, is there anything for you to state to that? Okay. And how many calls do you, do you have a figure or track what you track for calls that come in that sometimes we go to the dispatch center versus they should have came to the service center?
No.
Okay, all right. Appreciate it, thank you.
And my final question, I got two questions actually. One would be, if the board directed you like, let's try this out for three years going with the county, that's not really feasible, right? It's pretty much an all or nothing kind of scenario, right? It would be hard to, you wouldn't be able to turn the water back the other way.
It would be challenging to start and stop that. Once you make that decision, you're going to jump off, you're going to, you know, lose a lot of your employees in that, whether or not you're going to continue to maintain the system's operations as you typically would to bring that back forward. Again, there would be, you know, startup cost. Of course, you can do anything with money in that, but I think it would be very challenging to make that decision and then reverse that decision, particularly if it was in a, you know, a three or a five-year period.
And my final thing is, this presentation, would you be able to put this on our website and make it available for a public? and make it available for a public to view at a later time?
Oh, sure. Sure, we can do that.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. And I want to thank the officers for coming tonight too, in case there was any questions to answer. And we appreciate, all of you guys do, and we know it's a complex situation in the communications. That's one reason, I thought it'd be a good idea to have a presentation because I think it's one of these things where the, the general public just calls nine-one-one, they don't realize all that happens within the police department, communications department and everything that they do. It's really fascinating and we're glad that you guys are here. So thank you. All right, we'll move on with our department reports. Our first report tonight will be from our Fire and Emergency Medical Service, Chief Stan Dymel.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. For the month of May two, twenty twenty-one, the department made one hundred and sixty-six fire responses, four hundred and seventy-eight emergency medical responses. The paramedics saw a total of four hundred and eighty patients and made three hundred and seventy-five transports to local hospitals. Department completed one thousand four hundred and five hours of training, handled thirteen public education details. We had fifty-one hours of medic student, EMT student nurse ride-alongs with the paramedic units and completed eighty-one fire safety inspections. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Dymel.
Our next report tonight is from our Police Department, Chief Scott Kaviglia.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. For May twenty twenty-one, Communication Center handled approximately thirty-three hundred calls for service for police, fire and EMS. They clerked through almost four hundred and fifty juvenile adult court-related documents. On the public affairs side of things, we are reopening our Citizen Police Academy this year. We paused that last year due to COVID. You can get applications online or stop by the PD if you're thinking of doing it. It's a time worth spent. We have lots of alumni that come back every year. So if y'all would like more information, please call the PD or check online. On the administrative side of things, the body cameras went fully active on Tuesday. Remember, this process started just about, you know, six months ago and it's been full go. I appreciate the board's support, everyone's support. Mr. Geis, thank you for your guidance. Thanks to Lieutenant Blankenship who was tasked with the actual implementation and deployment and spent a lot of sleepless nights for him, but we're up and running with a couple little bugs here and there as you'd expect out of the gate, but we have it by the tail and it's, it's really remarkable software. So thank you again for that. The patrol side of things, we took three hundred and sixty-one incident reports, investigated one hundred and forty-three crashes, conducted three hundred and sixty-one traffic stops, issued one hundred and forty-three citations and two hundred and thirty-one warnings, conducted five hundred and twenty-seven field interviews, made eighty-eight criminal arrests, seventy-seven traffic arrests and served one hundred and fifty-eight warrants. Canine units in May seized thirty-eight grams of marijuana, eight and a half grams of heroin, forty-five grams of methamphetamines and twenty narcotic-type pills. They both, canines also completed their annual recertification with the state. The honor guard participated in the Memorial Day event over at Veterans Park. Investigations has closed one hundred and fifty-seven cases to date. Training for the month was three hundred and five hours for police department employees and fuel cost was approximately eighty-six hundred dollars with thirty-five thousand miles driven. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Chief Kaviglia?
No.
Thank you.
I, I do have one, Chief Kaviglia.
Yes, sir.
The Communication Center handled three thousand three hundred and eighteen calls for service for police, fire and EMS.
Yes, sir.
Are we tracking and identifying specifically, my assumption is yes, that is able to segregate those calls for police, fire and EMS? So I'll let you, if you can speak to that first, that that's true.
Sure. It comes out as a police call or a fire call, but it goes across both bands. So we're aware where, when I first started at Chivvy Police Department, I will send all fire calls to help load the stretcher, right? You know, it's just out west, it's a small place. So this way, everyone knows what everybody's doing.
Okay. Is it possible to include a report on another figure for the total calls? Because what I just heard in the last presentation was that we encourage everybody to call the Communication Center. And I think that that would kind of address part of the question I asked for with Mr. Taylor, if, if there's either a total calls and just as long as get some, some type of granularity as far as what the call's result was. Right now, we're showing the result for police, fire, EMS.
Sure.
But there might be wrong number, there might be hang up, there might be, they're calling and they're asking about junk days.
Refer to those calls on the inside of the PD's administrative calls. So we can track that number and I'll, I'll start adding that to the monthly report.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Officer Graham.
Our next department report tonight is from our Service Department, Mr. Matt Taylor, Director.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. In the Cemetery Division, from May fifteenth through the thirty-first, three burials were performed, generating one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Sixteen resident graves were purchased, generating eight thousand eight hundred dollars. The total amount generated for the period was eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. In the Roads Division, a total of twenty work orders were completed on seventeen township roads and staff started spraying the road right of way in preparation for roadside bowling. And then the Parks Division, staff performed maintenance on the baseball fields at Veterans and Clepper Park and staff finished multing all the landscape beds and gateway areas. And as most of you have seen, staff planted the flowers at the Civic Center and the Police Department. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Taylor tonight?
I'd like to thank the man who screwed for the beautiful flowers and arrangements out front. It's beautiful.
Thank you, sir.
Very, very good job. Well done. Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Our next report tonight is from our Planning and Zoning Department, Mr. Corey Wright, Director.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. For the month of May, we handled fifty-six zoning inspections, fielded eight complaints, issued six warning citations, two fifteen-day non-compliance letters and one thirty-day letter, notice of violation. Additionally, we processed one nuisance and had five violations resolved administratively. With regard to permit activity, we had fifty-seven permits for the month of May, three new commercial permits, six commercial changes of occupancy, three single-family permits. Remaining projects were signs, homeowner projects, home additions, decks, lots of pools and fences this time of year. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Trustees, any questions for Mr. Wright?
I have none. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Very good. We'll move on to our administration report from Ken Geis, our Township Administrator.
Thank you. The firehouse construction is moving forward on Beachwood Road and you can see that we have a lot of walls going up there and it, it really is taking shape now. We continue our discussions with Crossroads in Jungle Gims about the fireworks for September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. It looks like we're even going to hopefully include a touch-the-truck event on that as well. We did that a couple of years ago and that was highly successful. It's an operation where we bring all of our vehicles, not just police and fire vehicles, we bring our safety services vehicles, some of our gators, some of our lawn equipment. We ask other organizations to bring vehicles as well. If we can schedule air care to that site, we will schedule air care. So people will actually be able to go into the parking lot at Jungle Gims and really go up to the vehicles, talk to the people that operate them and get a hands-on look. It, it really is a very popular event and very well-received. We're continuing to work through some issues with ODOT on two seventy-five about the signage for Union Township on that. As the board knows, that was currently a sign that was created by Claremont County and placed there by Claremont County. It's, it's fallen a little, little bit of disrepair. The board authorized us to move forward, take a look at the chance for us to update that signage, provide more of a, a Union Township flair to that. And we're, we're continuing to do that and as really as late as today, we've gotten some updates on the requirements for the easements associated with that. And as that develops, I'll, I'll bring that to the Board of Trustees. The capital budget for two thousand and twenty-two process is open and, you know, if the board has any specific projects that they would like us to address, please let me know or Corey know so that we can bring those forward. I had someone from the Polo Fields contact me and, and talk about a no solicitors resolution in Union Township. As the board knows, we adopted a resolution probably more than thirty years ago regarding the vendors and solicitation registration with Union Township. However, we, that resolution did not prohibit solicitation and vendors from going door-to-door in particular communities. The Polo Fields brought to us the, the thought that, you know, like some other communities and other townships have done, they have actually restricted the ability for vendors and solicitors to go to particular communities and particular houses as long as they were properly marked in that. So I provided a couple of samples, one created by our law director and another by a Miami Township model for that, just for really consideration by the Board of Trustees to see, number one, if you would like to move in that direction and two, to provide some examples of, you know, resolutions that we could use. We need to hold a Records Commission meeting to update our records retention schedule. This is something that we're required to do annually with the implementation of the body cameras and the storage of those, that data in that. We need to add that to the records retention policy. So we're recommending that we establish that, you know, next month sometime. We have to provide proper notice because that is a, a public event. Hopefully, everybody's had the opportunity to go down to RJ's and see the front of the RJ Cinema in that. There, again, that was a project that they initially came to Union Township and said, hey, we'd like to partner with you on this project to create a, an outdoor pavilion out there as well as a skating rink in that, which I think is going to be just, you know, highly successful and really a, a nice event. They decided to do that on their own without any support or assistance from Union Township, but they're actively tearing up the, the pavement and that's what the fencing is around the cinema in front of RJ's. There's a placeholder on the agenda to talk about the room reservations policy for Union Township. Again, you know, with the release of the, the governor's health restrictions on that, I'd like the board to consider, you know, how they would like us to move forward with the room reservations at, at the Civic Center. And then the last thing, there is a, an item related to the vacation of Clepper Lane. And that was an initiation by the Board of Trustees, the one that the commissioners, and now it's back to the Board of Trustees for final disposition. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions for Mr. Geis?
No, sir. Just a couple of quick comments. Mr. Geis, the touch-the-truck event, very similarly, the police night out in August gets and brings vehicles out. Would, would having the touch-the-truck event combined, coordinated with the Crossroads event in September, would that, would that undercut anything from the police night out that's at Veterans Memorial Park that's planned for in August?
I don't believe so. I, I think it would be a great addition to that because we'll provide additional vehicles there. It's tough for us to pull the, you know, some of the bigger, some of the bigger vehicles outside of the parking lot onto, you know, the, the unpaved surfaces on that. But I, I think having two separate events for that would, would be very nice for the community.
Okay. All right, thank you. In regards to the resolution you spoke of on the solicitation, just to be very clear, that's for, for discussion regarding a resolution for all of Union Township and not specifically that one neighborhood that made the request? Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
In regards to note issuance for the bond anticipation note, is there anything as far as working through with the State Treasurer's Office that are processes that are burdensome or barriers to how quickly we're able to execute and get the bond notes done? Or is there any, any areas that you see as, again, being township administrator for a township, that there's areas where the State Treasurer's Office can improve?
No, actually, I, I think that this process is really pretty streamlined and we use a, a financial analyst to help us with that, that process. And typically, our debt, you know, is sold within minutes upon release of that. So we're able to do that pretty expeditiously and very economically. The rates have continued to go down and our fees and expenses have been fairly consistent.
Okay. All right. All right, now, that's, that's very beneficial. So, so you're very happy with the way the State Treasurer's Office works from what I hear. So that's, that's good. Be meeting with the State Treasurer soon, so I will share the positive feedback. That's all I have for you at this time. Thank you.
And Mr. Geis, we, our bond rating has been very high, correct?
We, we've maintained a double-A two rating for quite some time. Yes.
It's institutional investors that buy when you say it's sold in minutes?
Typically, yes. A lot of times, it's, it's banks.
All right. Thank you.
And then Mr. Logue, the touch-the-truck event, I was at the last one. And first of all, it was very well-attended, a lot, especially a lot of families with kids to come see the vehicles. But it wasn't just Union Township vehicles. I mean, there was a ODOT plow there.
Yeah.
One of their new plows was like a super plow, it was like, it had like three plows on it or something. But it gives you a chance, is for families and kids to see those vehicles up close, things that wouldn't be at a police that night out. There was a lot of different kinds of vehicles. And the sheriff's office also brought a lot of their vehicles too. There was motorcycle, police motorcycles and all kinds of different equipment. So it was really pretty cool.
Yeah.
It was a real nice event and you get a chance, the kids can walk around, actually climb into vehicles and it's really, it's a lot of fun for families.
Yeah, no, thank you for sharing. Good point. I was not on the board in two thousand and eighteen, so that's good information. Where, when and where was the touch-the-truck event in two thousand and eighteen?
They headed out in the front of, would be like the Crossroads parking lot at this, this time. It was, they, it was spread out throughout the parking lot. So they had it roped off where no cars would go through there, but it was out in that part of Jungle Gims, out in the parking lot.
Okay. Do you know the time of year?
It was in August.
August.
It was, at the same time we had the, that, that night we had the fireworks.
That was not our controlled event then?
Yeah.
You said they. Okay. So it was we, Union Township?
Yeah.
Is, is there any reason why we did not continue a touch-the-truck event every, say, August out in the parking lot, Crossroads then? If it was, is there any reason why it didn't happen then in two thousand and nineteen?
Not that I'm worried. I thought it was a successful event.
Okay.
Chief Dymel, you had a lot to do with that event. I mean, can you make a comment? It was, it was a pretty good, exciting event, right?
Yeah, it was an excellent event. It was well-attended, but it was a partnership with Jungle Gims and Crossroads and it was, all three were involved and it, there was impact or input from all three as to whether they wanted to make it an annual event or not. So I think that's where it didn't happen, you know, one year versus the other because it's a partnership with all three and all three. Because we're, we eat up, as you can imagine, a large portion of their public parking when we start putting all those trucks out there.
That's, that's, that's exactly what I was thinking with that, is it can take up size and space and it's exactly what I was thinking, frankly, to go in line with the Rodsian fireworks night because it gets very busy, it gets very packed.
Yeah, and, and on that note, we, just this week, the Union Township Administration, the Fire Department, Police Department met with representatives of Jungle Gims and Crossroads and they think it was the greatest thing that ever happened and they, they're all on board and want to do it again. It draws people in. Crossroads is going to do public events in association with their services that night and it, it's just a wonderful community event.
Great. Great.
It's their parking lot, so I mean, if they're in it, we're good to go.
Right. Right. We're essentially a limited partner on it. And I, I appreciate that, so thank you. Yeah, they're definitely good at Crossroads and Pastor Greg McFarfus, they're, he's been a great community partner, so thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll move right along. Tonight, we have a public hearing. This is for case number seven dash twenty-one dash oh. It's an overlay request. This is from Sun Chemical on Bock Buxton Road. Mr. Wright, did you have some opening comments regarding this public hearing?
Yes, sir, and I'll be very brief.
Yes, sir. And I'll be very brief. This overlay seeks to basically reduce some setback requirements in the M1 district for a long time. Union Township, light industrial users, Sun Chemical, they need some additional warehouse space. If you can see the pointer, the screen doesn't really do it justice here. But it's kind of in this area. And there's just, we have a twenty-foot side yard setback. They need some flexibility for loading, unloading, turning, just to accommodate the warehouse, to reduce the setback to seventeen feet. Actually seventeen point seven feet. This is in the Bock Buxton corridor. This would be an eight thousand square foot warehouse expansion on the northern property line. It's really a very minimal reduction in the proposed area. It's all, the whole site's zoned M1. Everything around it's zoned M1. This is kind of in the southern, the southeastern corner of the township. The white area you see is Potave Township adjacent to that. It's consistent with the land use plan. It facilitates additional warehouse needs and growth opportunities for a, for a township business, township employer. And it's consistent with our requirements. The action this evening is in accordance with Section thirteen ten of the zoning resolution to approve, modify, or deny this request for overlay. And at thirty-nine, thirty-two Bock Buxton, excuse me. And there is one recommended modification, just that all parking areas, circulation areas be paved. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Wright about that?
No. The one question I'd like to ask is the recommended modification, has it been discussed with?
Yes, Mr. Wright.
And they're okay with the modification?
No issues. We work very closely with this.
Thank you, sir.
Is that something, Mr. Wright, is that something that was just left off? All parking areas be paved with pavement consisting of either asphalt or concrete? Did they, they leave out what the material was or proposed separate, different?
That would just be a standard comment, just a standard comment that we would have just to indicate very clearly that that would be an asphalt binder for the, for the paving area. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a public hearing case. Is there anyone here tonight who'd like to speak on behalf of case, Union Township Overlay Case seven dash twenty-one dash oh? If you do, I'll ask you to state your name and address for the record, and I'll swear you in. Is there anyone who wants to comment tonight? Okay. Seeing that there's no public comments, I'll close the public hearing and open the floor now for the Board of Trustees. Gentlemen, is there any comments or questions about this case?
No, I don't have any questions or anything else to ask. One of this has been a company that's been with the township for many decades now. They're asking for a little bit of help from the township to expand their warehousing. And I think it's going to be good for the township and good for them.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Logue, anything you wanted to comment on or questions?
Negative, not this time. Just eight thousand square foot expansion. So perhaps includes more jobs.
Yeah, and a well-known company nationwide.
Well-known, well-based. And they're many decades.
All right. Then at this time, I'll ask for a motion. We're being asked to approve, modify, or deny this application. And this is in regards to Union Township Overlay Case seven dash twenty-one dash oh regarding Sun Chemical on Bock, thirty-nine, thirty-two Bock Buxton Road. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that according to Section three-ten of zoning resolution, the Board of Trustees entered into a motion to approve focus area overlay district for case number seven dash two-one dash zero with the recommended modification as listed.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So congratulations to Sun Chemical and their standard operation.
Mm-hmm.
Gentlemen, is there any old business tonight to bring up?
I have none, sir.
All right. We'll move on to new business. Let's see here. Lots of paperwork.
Yes.
The next item would be approval of our payments. We're being asked to basically pay the bills. A motion, we need a motion to approve the payments as prepared by Mr. Ron Campbell, our fiscal officer. If there's no objections, I'll ask for a motion to approve those.
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is approval of the monthly financial report. This is also prepared by Mr. Ron Campbell, our fiscal officer. If there's no objections or questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve that.
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just a reminder, these items get listed on our township website. So you can review them at any time. The next item is approval of purchase orders. We're being asked to approve the purchase orders that exceed ten thousand dollars. These are recommended by Mr. Ken Geis, our township administrator. Mr. Geis, would you please, for the public, read through these first?
First is to total quality logistics. It's our economic development agreement for February two thousand and twenty-one, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. The next is to the United States Postal Service for our retail postage at fifty thousand. The next is for the Fire Department, Bethesda Healthcare, our annual physicals at twenty-four thousand dollars. For the Fire Department, locality Media Incorporated Service Agreement for the first due size-up program at fifteen thousand dollars. The Fire Department, Alpha Omega Industries for the self-contained breathing apparatus replacement at forty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars. For the Police Department, Botorola Solutions Incorporated, the Call Works nine-one-one system yearly service fee, twenty-six thousand, four twenty-six, thirty-eight. Again, for the Police Department, ITC Technology Team Incorporated, our license and support for the alert system, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. And the last is for the fireworks for ROZI, thirty thousand dollars. And I'll just note on that that ten thousand dollars of that will be paid by Crossroads and Jungle Gyms.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions or comments regarding the purchase orders?
No, sir, I do not.
None at this time.
I'll ask for a motion and approve the purchase orders as presented by Mr. Geis, our township administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, the next item is really discussion regarding the establishment and adoption of additional regulation for door-to-door solicitation and sales in Union Township. And I'd like to see if there's any opening thoughts about it. My first feeling about this would be to move this item to our July agenda. So we have more time for public input regarding this. My experience with solicitors is most people don't like them. And they would probably prefer to have any kind of regulation that makes it harder for them to do that. I know some neighborhoods have, you know, posting at, as you, like an HOA might put a posting as you come into the neighborhood, no solicitors. I've also seen in other townships where the, like in Pierce Township, I think you can get like a decal that goes on your door that says, you know, knows lizards loud. And they have the listing of the, of the township resolution on it. So I don't know if that's something we'd be interested in. But so what I'd like to do is, one, tonight, open the floor for the trustees to discuss anything that, you know, reading through this, that you might have a problem with or want to see different. And then maybe circle back to our July meeting, give everybody more chance to talk to people, the public, to see if there's anything they would like to have further added to it or subtracted from it. So that's just my feeling. But is there any opening comments from the trustees?
I agree. We, we need to look into that a little bit further and talk to some of the residents. I know they're very bothersome. Sometimes it's three or four times a day, solicitors beating on the door. And they can be rather obnoxious from time to time. And I think you've probably all seen that happen to you. They demand, very demanding and, and kind of irritates you a little bit. Does me. So I'd, I'd like to see further discussion on it and talk to some of the constituents out there and see what, what's happening and what their feelings is about it also.
Mr. Geis, just a quick question on that. The thirty-year-old resolution, and we've talked about this in the past as far as the fact that the police are to be alerted and process taken before the solicitors come into neighborhoods. Is a hundred and fifty-dollar fee that is in the draft resolution, was that something, is that part of the current from the thirty-year-old resolution to have a fee schedule?
The, the fee schedule that was adopted originally was a twenty-five-dollar fee and it was just for registration. There was no prohibition in that at all.
Okay. And that hundred and fifty dollars, is that something that was, again, from working between yourself and the law director, you inputted and found the hundred and fifty dollars to be the fee level? Or is that also what Miami Township has, which I believe that one resident had provided that the township was the copy of what Miami Township is currently doing?
That, that's, I, I believe there's some, some guidance in the ORC on that as well as that was what Miami Township had previously adopted.
Okay. All right. So I mean, frankly, that looks at, looking at the local funding strategy for the government. And that is a, essentially a consumption fee and potentially a way to have revenues that come in that offset some of these additional costs that we have. And a good way to keep taxes lower for the community. And that's kind of the way to do it, keep taxes low and, and then have consumption fees for, for those that are utilized. So that's just my, my perspective on that currently. Thank you.
So you would favor the fee then?
Just my current perspective right now. I'm just saying that it's a, it's, it is a, one way to look at that. As far as if you're trying to look at revenue generation for the township, that's one thing. As far as, I guess I got asked the question I asked earlier, has there been historical business case analysis to look at that? I mean, I know the fees every year, the, the standard fees, but for bringing on new fees or making, making those as adjustments, that's something to, I guess, to, to weigh. So just a statement.
Thank you. And then I did want to point out too that this, we have our current solicitation resolution that's currently in effect. Basically, it just makes the, the person have to register their, and, and say we're going to be out selling in your, and show an ID, I think. So this, this would strengthen that with a lot more checks, as far as background checks and some other things, filling out more detailed forms. Also making a picture ID necessary, things like that. Excuse me. But I did want to point out, there is a whole list of exceptions too. So like a farmer's market, a person who's not selling anything but maybe is like a, from a religious group. Delivery of newspapers, would that be subject to this? The sale and delivery of products by public parochial, private schools, so school kids can still sell. And it would also, I assume, allow Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and things like that. Also allows people exercising their First Amendment, like political groups and things like that would, would be accepted. So even though there would be more stringent enforcement of the for-sale type programs, there, there would still be a lot of people who aren't subject to that. And people would still could come to your door. So I just want to make people understand that it's, it's not a perfect solution if you don't want people knocking on your door. But one thing I have heard from, from residents who've input it to, gave me input was by putting a no solicitation, solicitation sign on your door, that seems to keep a lot of people away. So I think that's a good idea if you really don't want people knocking on your door. And you don't have to answer your door either, by the way. So just keep that in mind too. But gentlemen, would you be in favor of taking some time to read through this and examine it and then come back to our July meeting, have it on the agenda for July? And then we can decide if there's any changes or if we want to go ahead and go forward with it? Is that seen that case?
I think that's acceptable.
That's appropriate. Yeah. I'm, I'm all in favor in finding ways to keep the taxes low and to hear from the community and have that community engagement. And I think it actually presents a perfect opportunity to actually look at the ability to collect payment over the website and have a refresh of the website. And in that sense, there's different types of act, service providers like Civic Engage. I see some heads nodding out here about the annoyance of people knocking on your door. And if we're taking that information and they're paying for a permit, there should be no reason why we can't also send a push notification in the township or within a local locality that there's actually people out knocking on doors in your area. Because those type of tools do exist. But it comes down to business case analysis and does the cost there outweigh the benefit. So I absolutely welcome community engagement on this.
Okay. And Mr. Geis, can I ask you, or do we still need more input from our police department? Because they might have to enforce this, absolutely would have to enforce this at some point. And also, they would be, I assume, the place where you would go get your permit. So is the Police Department willing and able to handle all this?
I'm sure the Police Department will do whatever you ask them to do.
I'm sure they will. I just want to make sure that their, their input's been involved. If there's anything further, I would like to, you know, include that in. So if, so Mr. Campbell or Mr. Geis, do we need a motion to table this? Or can we just, this is just up for discussion anyway. It's not a resolution yet. So we can move to, or just ask that we bring a resolution forth in July? And then if there's any changes, we need to make those, right?
Yeah. It was just on the agenda, just to discuss this and, you know, for whatever action you wanted to, to take moving forward.
Okay.
Let me essentially carry it forward as old business for next, next month, correct?
Right. Okay. Let's do that then? Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good with moving that forward for.
Hundred percent.
And while we're just wrapping up the subject real quick, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Wright, would you see that yours, between service and permit zoning, would you see that your departments would be in a better situation of process or be part of that? You know, we're talking about the Police Department enforcing, but I don't really realistically see the police as the ones selling the permits. And maybe I'm mistaken, but is that maybe there's a better process there?
Why don't we interject from Mr. Wright? And Mr. Wright's free to answer. But there was, this resolution was calling for a, a quick background check?
Correct.
The Police Department would do and also a fingerprint?
Correct.
One of them, like the thumb or something?
Correct.
So it might be difficult for them to, to be able to form that function?
I just, I guess I see that as you pay for something on the front end, then go through that process. And if you're successful on the back end of fingerprint and background check, then they get the go-ahead and it actually gets released.
Okay.
So I think payment processing would start at a different entry point.
Mr. Wright, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I, no, no, sir.
Okay. So, yeah, we can work that process out. That's a good question, Mr. Logue. Anything else about that?
No. Let's move forward.
All right. Tonight, we do have a resolution.
We still have item E for new business.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm sorry. Checked off the wrong one here. So, Union Township Civic Center Meeting Rooms Update and Discussion. So, Mr. Geis, you brought this up in your report. I'm assuming you're looking for the Board for direction as far as going back to our, our former policies. Is that what you're asking for tonight?
Correct.
Okay. So then I'll open the floor for discussion from the trustees regarding our meeting room regulations. We changed these due to COVID nineteen protocol and what was, we were being asked to be done by the state of Ohio. And those regulations have been lifted. So gentlemen, I was wondering if there's any discussion or are we in favor of going back to our former meeting room policies?
I have no objection to moving back to our former policies prior to COVID at this time. And I think everything's working well for the policy we have set up for this ending of COVID. And we have some organizations wanting to make use of facilities. I don't see any reason why we should not make them available.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Geis, do you have any other points to add for this or?
No.
Okay. I, so I know his, previously, we've discussed- Okay. So I know his, previously we've discussed, there's currently with cleaning, with the cleaning fee for twenty-five dollars remain?
That's, that's up to the board of trustees. We really were doing that specifically for the COVID issue. In that if the board would want us to do that, we could do that as well.
Were there any promises or guarantees when the Civic Center was built to the citizens of the community that there would never be a fee charge for access to Civic Center?
I don't know that there was anything written that it, that there wouldn't be any fees associated with that.
Okay.
That's seventeen years ago.
Okay.
But Mr. Geis, even though the regulations have been lifted, say, mask wearing and things like that, there's still, I mean, there's still COVID-19 cases out there. Would we still be required to clean the room each time the room's used? I know we do some cleaning on it anyway, but this, this was more detailed as far as yard control and things like that. So if we continue that, we may need to keep that twenty-five-dollar charge. I don't know.
Again, I think that's for, you know, the board's direction on that typically before, we didn't do a, you know, sanitation or sanitization of the rooms like, you know, we did during the COVID event in that we sprayed them and wiped, had them wiped down. And we restricted it to one a day on that so that we would have the ability to make sure that we were able to properly clean that. In that if you wanted us to, you know, continue that type of restriction in that or to space those out so that we would be able to do that. One of the reasons we kept it at the twenty-five dollars is so it would be once a day. And we could have a cleaning crew come in and do that and we contracted with them to do that. If we had multiple events in there, that probably would cost, or require our employees to do that as opposed to having, you know, the contract folks come in and do that.
So I'm in favor of, yes, falling in line with the fact of removing and lifting the COVID restrictions that are there. But I do see it as an opportunity as we've looked at the room reservation process through and through. And I've heard stories of residents in the past having to go to Mount Moriah and then coming here to actually make payment. And it's more of a cumbersome process. So I definitely would like to look at being able to make the RSVP system go online and on the websites. So again, it's another opportunity for, for the website to get updates and refresh. And to that point, if it's a business case, it makes sense to try in an effort to keep taxes low and increase some of the user fees. Then if the discussion's there from community feedback as far as that goes, acceptance of payment would be an enhanced service to, to the community. Another issue that I've heard complaints on is the inability to schedule the rooms for more than thirty days in advance. I know what that's like from club events, nonprofit events, just hosting a function. You want to be able to get your location, location, location decided early as you can. So, you know, if we can be able to increase that to more than a year or, you know, a year out or something that's more feasible, I don't understand the barrier currently for just a thirty-day limitation. So that's my heartache with just reverting back to the old rules and not taking the opportunity there to make some good adjustments and some positive updates. So that's some opportunities that I'd like to at least hear from, hear from the community on and see. So thank you.
I believe some of the policies were changed because before the groups had the ability to block a meeting time and room for like an entire year. And then they wouldn't use the room at all. So another citizen group might have wanted to use the room, but we told them it was already booked up. And then the group never showed up to use the room. So that's what created some of that change. So we could look at that policy if you want to come back and make a proposal to compromise somewhere in between, you know, I'm willing to look at it too. But that was the reason, I'm just explaining to you what, what kind of prompted.
Well, no, that's great. That's great history to know that that's the rationale for why it went to such a short window of thirty days only in advance. So again, I've been in those shoes of reserving rooms and you're getting large organizations together. That in itself presents the benefit of a user fee. If it's, you know, I know that Miami Township, but look at some of the other townships around, Miami Township's got a lot of different rooms that they, that they offer to the constituents or anybody from the public, you know, and they range from fifty dollars, I believe, up to maybe five hundred dollars depending on the size and the facilities of that room. So when you have that, you don't run into the issue there of what you're saying where no one has skin in the game and they just make a reservation and walk away. But if they've got monetary value tied to it, you're, something's gonna, something's gonna happen there because they want that credit or they want to move it or they want to update it. But I think that's also the opportunity to look at the website overall for a total communication tool. Again, I think Civic, Civic Engage is one of the providers, Civic Plus is an ability there as well too. So it's an area that we can absolutely enhance and at least look at the business case for it.
Well, I'd be wanting to look at that to help with any kind of fee payment. Getting easier payment's always a good thing. So I'm in favor of that. But tonight, what we're, we're gonna discuss tonight or act upon tonight is do we want to lift the current COVID-19 protocol regulation that was put on the meeting rooms and go back to the former schedule? And then, Mr. Logue, we can change the policy at any time. We can, if we want to have discussion about, you know, amending the policy, we can do that at any future meeting. Definitely, you know, going into the reorganization meeting and being here is always a good time for that too. But, you know, I'm, I'm open to hearing any ideas on it because I, I think the staff will tell you scheduling the rooms is, can be difficult at times. And sometimes the residents aren't as friendly as you would hope they would be and they don't always leave the room in the condition it's supposed to be left in. And that's unfortunate. Some groups are excellent and they do a great job. They put everything back. They, they make the place better than it was when they left. So it goes both ways. But if we think we need to add a fee for the rooms, I'm open to discussion on that. But for tonight's purposes, I would like just to zero in on just the COVID regulations that were put in and make a decision about that tonight.
Okay, yeah. Just real quick on that. So I hear what you're stating on that as far as that goes. Concern about personnel costs, but again, that's why I would flip stomp the use of technology and utilizing it. Because then it can be something that's more hands-off. It's automated and does it on its own. And they get, you know, automated emails saying that they're reserved. And if they want to click here to cancel, they can click here to cancel. So all of that type of innovative approaches to fix a problem or, you know, an issue that we've had in the past, we can apply those innovative approaches moving forward. And if we're off page on that, I'm just following item E here for Union Township Civic Center Meeting Room Update and Discussion. So I'm just, just following by that. So, yeah, I'm supportive of lifting the COVID restrictions, which I was under the understanding that was already within Mr. Geis's assigned duties and roles to be able to essentially just lift and control for operations of the Civic Center. They did not actually need a board action to do that from our history of going into it last year. So.
Okay. I think it would be good for the board to go ahead and just make a motion to regarding this matter. But Mr. Geis, would you, Mr. Logue makes a good point. Would you be willing to see what types of programs are out there? And if any of the trustees have ideas, present those to Mr. Geis so he can look into them. But if there's a software program that can automate some of this process, I'm okay with that. But would you look into that to see what kind of costs are involved with that and see if it would benefit us?
Sure.
We can, we can then make a decision about that down the road once we have a chance to see what, what is offered by these different companies. So I think it's a good idea. If we can make it easier and get payment quicker, why not? That's a great idea.
Mr. McGraw, there are a number of nonprofit organizations that use the facilities downstairs. We have Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts groups and we're talking about an elevated cost to them. They can probably be very cumbersome to get that money together. I think when you talk more about raising the fees of using the rooms, which we thought about in the past, some organizations just don't have that funding.
Yes.
They come up every, shall we say, every month when they have a meeting, they come up with that fifty, sixty bucks or whatever it might be, a hundred bucks. I don't know what we may come up with, but I think it's, I think it's very detrimental to their causes. Trying to operate their own little functional groups.
And that could be true for a few.
That's true.
Several. Also, though, when they operate as nonprofit and a board, it requires more than, you know, sometimes two, three people get together to issue a check and write a check. And when they have to do that process every thirty days and go to one location, go to another location, drop off a check and they can't just make one payment for the year, you know, we're, we're, we're missing, you know, the opportunity, one, to serve them and give them a great space for their meetings that they can actually get more out of that than going somewhere else to other locations. And the cost of this building can get recovered in that way. So there's definitely, but I think that there's a solution in there. You just have to have the discussion. And I'm welcome to hear from the community and welcome to hear from the people.
And everything's about dollars too. These nonprofit organizations just don't have the extra funding. Their group, trying to keep their groups together. And I think they add an additional cost to their meetings that can really hurt their organizations. Not for charging a large fee to these nonprofit organizations, like I said, these youth groups or so on and so forth. I think we need to take that all into consideration.
So not to be off the cuff with it, but I'm sure there's an opportunity there to have an exemption based on already what their operating status is and what they actually report and what they do. You know, again, I've been involved with several over the years. And, you know, funding does come in and it's, that's what it's used for as a business expense. But at the same rate, those that are completely startups, then that's really where you're in that genre too of, are we providing a service that's just for facilitating startups and facilitating group settings and group meetings? So I think that there's a solution in there. We just have to hear from the people.
Okay. So Mr. Geis, am I correct in, you're looking for board direction tonight as far as the protocol and the meeting room usage or?
I'd like to, I really wanted to stimulate this type of discussion and see what you had to say before we just said we're either gonna go back to the way we were doing it or whether we're going to continue the, you know, the operation that we have. The only thing that reservation I would have is if we're going to make a change to where we're gonna allow long-term reservations out there in that, that might be cumbersome if we go back to what we're doing right now and for a period of time in that. I don't know what the timeframe's gonna be in to evaluate a new system into that. I think that could be pretty quickly and we could continue doing what we're doing now for, you know, another thirty days and talk about the status of it then as well.
I agree with you. That could be a long process to look at new systems and evaluate them and do market intelligence on that and research with that and hear from the community and get community feedback. So I don't think that that's any type of short-term solution. I think it's a great long-term strategic plan to look at for the long term. You know, I mean, it could take some time. But in regards to just going back, lifting the COVID restrictions, if there's a potential or possibility that you can come to a solution on, if there's been an issue in the past with reservations being left and left open and that has been an issue, perhaps there's a managed, you know, an internal personal capital there for essentially a management system that if someone's done that or recognized that, then they're limited to only making the reservation thirty days in advance. But if they're able to be responsible, have their meetings booked in advance and show up, I think we can probably find a solution to be able to support that so that some of these organizations can go ahead and make one check and one payment. Well, if we're getting rid of the twenty-five-dollar fee, then that's not gonna be an issue right now currently as it stands. But at least make the reservation one year in advance because, you know, I know VVA 649 has been meeting downstairs right now and they're getting ready to go back to the senior center. And it's great to have them here. But they're going back to the senior center because it's, there's less barriers to entry to, to be there. And, you know, I think that, again, if you want to welcome the community into this building and see it and be part of it and be able to come out here for Civic Engagement, we need to be able to kind of reduce those barriers to entry. And that's just a process there. I think that we can probably get a solution for it. So thank you.
All right. So is anybody wishing to take action tonight or we want to move this to July and give us time to look into this further?
Mr. Geis, were you just looking for consensus from the board to lift the COVID restrictions? You don't need to form a board action, correct?
I don't think.
Got consensus to lift the COVID restrictions and all the rules there?
Well, I'm in favor of that.
Yes, I am also.
If we want to have a further meeting room discussion, we can certainly do that in any time.
Go.
All right. All right. All right, we're gonna move on now to our resolutions. The first is Resolution 2021-11. It's a nuisance abatement resolution. We're being asked to adopt this resolution authorizing the abatement and the removal of vegetation, noxious weeds, garbage, trash and debris pursuant to Section 505.87 of the Ohio Revised Code at the following properties. 983 State Route 125, Cincinnati. 4394 Glen SD Withinsville Road, Cincinnati, Ohio. And 4320 Terrace Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio. Gentlemen, you have the packet of information regarding these properties and the different things that were done and also pictures showing the current conditions. Is there any discussion or if not, we ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-11?
I'll say the same thing I've said a thousand times over. I can understand people go out and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for a piece of property and won't take care of it. That defiles me. I just want to understand. Yes, and I'll make a motion that, will you adopt Resolution 2021-11?
Same here. He made the motion. Do you want a second?
Just second.
Good. Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next resolution is Resolution 2021-12, a resolution ordering the vacation of Clefford Lane. We're being asked to adopt this resolution ordering the vacation of Clefford Lane pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5553.045 upon receipt of a resolution adopted by the Board of County Commissioners and servants of the same. Gentlemen, is there any discussion about this or any questions?
No, I think it's been taken care of. I'm ready.
I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 2020-12, resolution ordering the vacation of Clefford Lane per Ohio Revised Code 5553.045.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So that takes care of our regular business tonight, but we have some other things to do. First, I'll open the floor now for comments from our board members. Gentlemen, is there anything you'd like to bring up tonight that to discuss?
You probably have that on your agenda to speak. We'd all speak about the concert we had last week. A lot of behavior and it was very, very well attended. We have over, what, two hundred somebody within the gathering?
Probably two-twenty, is what, custom?
Very well done and very well taken care of. A fine group. And we have another group coming on this week. Three-day, three-day rule?
Yes. Eight P.M. at the amphitheater, which is right behind the Civic Center here. If you've ever been to a concert, please come out. It's a lot of fun. It's an enjoyable night. It doesn't cost anything. Just bring a chair. You can bring a snack, a drink.
Non-alcoholic.
Non-alcoholic, yes, at this time. But it's a good time. So we had a very good crowd. People were so happy to be outside.
They were. Very, very happy to be outside for a while.
Anything else, Mr. McGee?
No, sir. I have nothing else. Just time.
Mr. Logue, anything you want to bring up then?
No, this one.
I'll just mention a few things here. One is we did have a ribbon cutting last Friday for the Boys and Girls Club. Mr. McGee, Mr. Logue, myself and many members of our staff attended. Very nice, it's probably the most crowded ribbon cutting I've ever been to. But it was really great to see a nice Boys and Girls Club, safe place for kids to go in the Mount Carmel area. But it's open to really all the eastern Cincinnati. It's not restricted to Union Township. But it was a beautiful facility.
It was.
And it's great to see investment in that building. It's been in our township for a while, but they did a great job kind of turning it around and fixing it up. And also a lot of donations by corporate sponsors, especially the Wyler Automotive Group. They were one of the key sponsors of it. But it was a great event. But it was a great event, and tomorrow, I believe, we have another ribbon cutting for Sharefax.
That's correct.
So that will happen tomorrow. So Sharefax is over, I think Ivy Gate is their actual address, but it's on Ivy Point Boulevard over there. So if you haven't seen it yet, it's a chance to come by, and I think you're kind of having a sort of an open house. But I think at some point, maybe in July, they're supposed to do some kind of community event, too. So I'll, we'll get more information on that. Just wanted to mention that. And if there's no other comments by the trustees, I was kind of open comments for the public, but to start that off, we do have a young, I believe, Cub Scout in the crowd, or is it? Boy Scout.
Boy Scout.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward, young man, if you don't mind. We'll be nice to you. Just stand up the microphone there for a second. Could you say your first name, please?
Anthony.
Okay, Anthony, and what Boy Scout group are you with?
Four four three.
And that's an Amelia?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for attending our meeting. Do you have any questions for the trustees while you're here? Okay. And you get, you get to check off that you've been to a governmental meeting. Is that correct? All right.
Amen.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for attending our meeting.
Thanks for coming, young man.
All right.
Thank you, Anthony.
So, yeah, just to really mention that, but anytime that if you got a scouting badge you need to get, our meetings are open for that, and we're always welcoming people to attend, so thank you. So at this time, I'll open the floor for public comments. Is there anyone who wants to make a comment tonight? Please come forward. If you would, we ask that you state your name and address for the record.
My name is Paul Henson. I live at nine six seven View Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, four five two four five. You guys have been here a long time. I have large lettering for old eyes, so it won't take long.
Thank you for coming.
I want to thank you for permitting me to address the Board of Trustees this evening. I'm not known for my public speaking abilities, so bear with me as I make my way through my remarks. My wife and I have been residents of Union Township since nineteen seventy-eight. We have witnessed the urbanization in Union Township. In most cases, thanks to the efforts of our citizens and our representatives, the changes have been positive. At the meeting of five thirteen, two thousand twenty-one, which I believe was the last meeting, the Board of Trustees granted time to a resident to address them. The resident spent most of the time questioning and goading trustee Michael Logue. Based on something they heard or read, they repeatedly asked Mr. Logue if he had known of anything that had happened, which is illegal or unethical on the board. The resident did not address anybody else on the board of administrat-, or the administrators. Why was the resident hammering Mr. Logue about support of a hundred dollar, or, sorry, one thousand dollar American Rescue Plan funds going to first responders? Mr. Geis had just spoken about thirty million dollars going to Union Township just minutes earlier. He didn't question Mr. Geis, just Mr. Logue. It also did not go on a notice that no one seemed to be interested in requesting that the resident be more respectful or adjust their tone. This is something I would have expected trustee McGrata control as the de facto chairman. I'm very proud of trustee Logue, particularly in the way he handled this situation. He didn't permit himself to be badgered into embarrassing himself or humiliating anyone else. Mr. Logue stated he had not seen anything illegal or unethical, I believe trustee Michael Logue. I think during his tenure on the board, he probably has not seen anything illegal or unethical. That is the reason that he received over sixty percent of the votes in the last election. Voters knew he could make a difference. Apparently, he has. But it should be noted that before Mr. Logue took office, we had two situations which, if were not illegal or unethical, certainly were improper. First situation involved Union Township supporting Doug Evans in receiving a special tax rate and zoning exemptions of farmland purchased in two thousand twelve. An investigation by Kermit County Auditor's Office in two thousand nineteen determined Mr. Evans' operation was not entitled to this cut. Part of the property had been developed as commercial. Evans Landscaping was ordered to pay the balance of taxes. His whole situation should have been avoided as Mr. Evans had been under investigation by the FBI since two thousand thirteen. Raided by the FBI in two fif-, two thousand fifteen, found guilty in two thousand eighteen of minority contract fraud. He was ordered to pay five hundred thousand dollars in fines, sentenced to twenty months in jail, which I think he's finally doing since the COVID thing went away. More steps should have been taken to avoid the appearance of impropriety. The second situation is the ongoing fiasco known as Miller Place Development. The Board of Trustees, McGraw, Beamer, McGee, twice tried to improperly make a zoning change. Fortunately, thanks to Judge Delott and Judge McBride, this has been stopped, at least for time being. This has cost many citizens in Union Township a great deal of time and money to fight our trustees' decisions, something we should not have to do and do not want to do, do again. In closing, you should consider the interests of voters when making decisions representing us. Respectful, respectfully, I am not convinced that the current conflagration of this board can be trusted to do this. I do want to thank the Board of Trustees for permitting me to address them this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Seeing there's no one. Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward.
Name's Bruce Bohr. I live at forty-eight eighty-five Rumpkey Road.
Forty-eight, forty-five Rumpkey?
Forty-eight eighty-five Rumpkey Road. I'd like to thank, thank him for making his comments, and I, I back his, his, uh, comments. I think other people should, too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No one? Okay. I'll just respond real quickly to the Evans case. I'm no fan of what Mr. Doug Evans has done. But that wasn't, and that was not a board decision that did that. Our zoning department, just like our police department makes decisions and follows the law, our zoning department does the same thing. And as far as the taxes on that property, that's solely up to the county auditor. The township has no input on how a property is classified by the county auditor and what tax rate they pay. So that's totally up to the county auditor, and I think as a reaction to the story, they have made some changes, but I think there's still more changes ongoing. So, also, the, the resident who lived next door and brought the complaint never brought a complaint to our zoning appeals board. We asked them to do that. They never did that. But also, in that case, Union Township, the resident tried to sue Union Township. We were removed from the case by the courts. The Board of Appeals said we should not be part of the case. So, I hear what you're saying about the Doug Evans situation. That's not something that I supported. And as far as what proper taxes they should be paying, that's solely up to the county auditor, and I would hope you would address your same concerns to the county auditor in that case. We don't, we don't set tax rates. We don't decide how the county auditor wants to classify a property either. Okay? And as far as Rumpkey Road, I think a lot has been said back and forth about that. I appreciate your comments. And I listen to those very well, so I don't think there's any more deliberation that's going to change anybody's minds here tonight. So, but I just want to say I appreciate you bringing it up and voicing your opinion on it. As far as public comment scale, we try our best, at least I do, as the board chairperson, to let people speak what they want to speak about. Occasionally, we get people who speak about things they have no, nothing to do with the board business. And, but, you know, we believe strongly in the First Amendment right and the chance to address your government. And I think, you know, sometimes, you know, maybe you're right. We should, the decorum, you know, can be looked at closer. I think that's a good point to make. But, you know, we try to let people have their chance to speak their piece. And just like you did tonight. So I think it's important to do that, and throughout the entire COVID episode, we've never closed our meetings to public input. And all our meetings are recorded. You can watch our meetings at any time if you can't be here. They're on Facebook. They're on our website. They're on U T T V. We, we go overboard in posting our, our documents, our meetings. And so we just feel it's important that everybody have opportunity to see what's going on and to address the board. And sometimes decisions we make, that when you, when you have to vote, and you're the person sitting up here and you have to make that decision, you have to think the entire township. And, you know, sometimes you're right, sometimes you're wrong. But every vote does affect people one way or another. Some people are happy. Some people are mad. Some people are indifferent. But, you know, that's our job to try to evaluate these things and do the best thing for the entire township. And we appreciate you making the comments, so thank you. So, gentlemen, any final comments you'd like to make? I got a few announcements to make, if there's nothing else.
Yes, sir. Well said.
I just want to mention, first of all, our post office continues to operate downstairs during normal business hours. If you have mailings and things to do, that's a great place to go. It's a lot easier than going all the way down to Anderson Township or some other post office. Civic Center offices are open to the public for zoning permits and general information. Our meeting room, the Queen City Room, is still available for reservations. The concert series continues. Mr. McGee, you mentioned three-day rule, is coming up Saturday at eight P M. Then there'll be a little bit of a break, and then we come back Saturday, July third, for another concert. It'll be Chuck Brisbane and the Tuna Project. And July seventeenth, we have the Wild Rice Review. All these bands I know have, like, Facebook pages. They also have, some have websites even. You're free to look them up and see what kind of music they do, but they're all, I can tell you, they're all very entertaining. It's a good night out, if you would like to be here. I also want to mention, since we won't be meeting till July, that June fourteenth is Flag Day coming up. And I believe there are some Flag Day ceremonies in the area, especially the Vietnam veterans have one, usually here at the Civic Center, so that'll be June fourteenth. Also, Independence Day, July fourth. Let's not forget that. That'll be before our next meeting, so happy Fourth of July, Independence Day to everybody. And July fifth, I'll note, is a holiday, so the offices, Union Township, will be closed on July fifth. That's a Monday. So July fifth, or July fourth, I'm sorry, falls on a Sunday, I believe. And then the fifth is the Monday. Does that sound correct?
Well, one, one correction there.
Yes.
Flag retirement situation here at the township will not, not be this year.
Oh, okay.
Six forty-nine has decided to have a functional thing up at the bagel.
Everything bagels.
Everything bagel.
Okay.
Bring your old flags there, and I think any participation will be, so many free flags given out. The chaplain's doing that ravel, giving them, giving them ways, first what?
Yeah, typically, it's the first two that arrive, get, get a, a new flag in return. And then the first, for the first ten, they get a, a certificate for bagels inside.
Okay. Great. Thank you for updating that. You can drop your old flags off here still at the Civic Center, and I believe our firehouses take them, too. So if you have an old flag that's tattered and torn, you want to properly see it retired, just drop it off here at the Civic Center. We'll get it to the Vietnam veterans. Is there anything else, gentlemen?
I have nothing else, sir.
All right. Gentlemen, we're being asked to go into executive session tonight. I would need a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section one two one dash point two two G as follows, to consider information related to specific business strategy of an applicant for economic development assistance pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one two one point two two G, Section eight. Also, to consider the employment of a public employee pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section one two one two two G one, I believe. Is there a motion to that effect? To go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that, and it's also, it's good that it's itemized specifically for what the requirement is that we're going in. It's not a laundry list of items, so I'm going to second, second that.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
We're into executive session at nine P M.
Thank you for those who attended. If you want to wait around till we're done, we'll be back as soon as we can. But thank you for watching our meeting and attending.
We need a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
We're out of exec- executive session at nine fifty-four P.M.
At this time, as we resolve the executive session, there'll be no action taken by the board. Gentlemen, before we conclude our meeting, there's one thing I wanted to bring up. Starting July, we were to go back to our normal meeting schedule, which is twice a month. So I wanted to bring up if anyone, how everybody feels about that. First of all, my initial thoughts were, we're usually a little bit slower in the summer months, is maybe keep a one meeting in July, one meeting in August, and then go back to two meetings in September and October, when we get a lot busier. But I'm open to suggestions, or if someone, if you prefer that we go back to two meetings like normal, I'm okay with that, too. That's just my suggestion. Is there any thoughts about that?
I think normally, normally we have a lot of people during the summer months take vacation, and I don't think it's going to affect our audience attendance in any way, shape, or form. I think it'd give everybody the time that they need for vacation with their families. Extra time, doesn't hurt.
Do you have any preferences for Logan?
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with getting the business done in the one meeting a month, and I think as that goes, we look and see what, just continue to watch, I guess, and see how everything kind of progresses and moves, so.
So would you like to say we could make a motion to have one meeting in July and August, and then talk about it again in August?
Right, we have to decide at August, and we're going to make these changes.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's comfortable to say July's, July's good as it is now. I don't know if we have any new information or new updates on anything going into August. You know, maybe we'll see that'll be a busier month, so I guess that's, I kind of, maybe see that as the exception to the rule, for kind of reverting to old rules of being two, two meetings a month, but if there's a good exception there for the fact of business itself is slow enough, then maybe make the exception to just keep the first or second Thursday of the month, so.
I think the biggest driver of it is really how many zoning cases come up.
Yeah.
We don't want to come in and have ten zoning cases in one meeting. That's really, to me, that's what kind of drives it.
Yeah. Yeah, I completely can see that as far as, again, for workload and what can get done through night, so it's not a midnight.
Right.
So.
Well, then I'll make a motion that for the months of July and August, we'll only meet once, which would be the second Thursday of the month, and then cancel the meeting for the fourth Thursday of the month? I think that's a motion.
Second. Roll call. Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then we're welcome to reexamine this next meeting if we want, so.
Yeah.
That's good.
If the needs change, we can change and adapt. All right, so we need a motion then to, is there anything further business? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
We're adjourned at nine fifty-eight P.M.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for all of those who are watching online, and thank you for all the extra time for all our staff. Appreciate it.